We'll call to order the Library Board of Trustees regular meeting for March 11th, 2021. And just as a reminder, we're still in this pandemic time. So it's being conducted remotely and held by video conference. That's to ensure all of the health and safety of all the public, the staff, and all the, you know, all of the trustees. And for the public, you can find this link at the library website to join us. And I think then we will get started. Sean, do you want to do roll call?
Sure. Bianca Richards.
Present.
David Ewens. Annie Chang. Dr. Malina.
Present.
Dean Serwin.
Present.
Thank you.
And I know we have some guests tonight, so I'm just going to go ahead and introduce Ellen Torres from the Friends of the Library. Welcome. Olivia Staff from the library. I'm sorry, Olivia. Where's your, there you are. Radville. Sorry, there's your last name. I need to just click on it. And was Maida going to join us or not? Okay, okay. So and that's, and then again, Olivia Radville's from the library. And yeah, and Mayor Diana Mahmoud, our council liaison, and of course, Kathy Billings and Sean Fay from the library. Okay.
Sally.
I'm sorry, Sally. Sorry, sorry.
I'm a regular anyway.
Right. And Sally Kilby, the new president of the Friends of the Library. And I think there are no presentations. And did we have any public comment?
No public comments.
Okay. So let's move on to our action items. And did you, hopefully you all got a chance to review the packet that went out with the announcement. And on to the minutes from our last meeting, did everybody get a chance to review? Are there any edits, questions, comments?
I was curious. I made a request to see the audited financials for the Friends of the Library during the last meeting. I didn't see it make the minutes unless I missed it, Sean.
No, I don't think I specifically included that, but in the comments, it was sort of alluded to with Dr. Malina's request for budget information. And I believe that Sally would be presenting information regarding to Friends funds.
Okay.
But we can, I mean, we can amend that to show that you specifically asked for it. We just don't have the power to necessarily give it to you. I did talk to family about it, but.
Yeah, if we could note that as a amendment, that'd be great.
Okay, we'll, we'll, we'll note that, that Annie did request that and Dr. Malina requested that. Any other changes or edits on the February 11th meeting? Is there a, do I have a motion to?
A motion. I'll move to approve the minutes.
Okay.
As amended, as amended, yeah.
As amended, and a second, I think Dean, I saw your hand.
A second.
And second by Dean. Do we need a roll call for that?
Yes. Bianca Richards.
Yes.
Annie Chang.
Yes.
David Ewens.
Yes.
Dr. Malina.
Yes.
Dean Serwin.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so those are the minutes. And then our next action item is the Library Board of Trustees, the manual update. And that was item, let me go through all my papers. Sorry, everybody. Item number four. Yeah, and everybody get a chance to look at that. Are there any questions or edits or concerns? About, and that's item number four. Okay, hearing none, then do we have a motion to approve of? So again, the recommendation is recommend that the Library Board of Trustees rescind item 1.3, the trustees' goal adopted May 1973. Maybe some of you weren't even born then. And last amended November 2002 from the Library Board of Trustees manual. Have we, do I have a motion for that? One second.
I can move.
Okay, David, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, and Dr. Malina. Okay, so there's been a movement then from David Ewens and Dr. Malina for, to approve of item number four, the trustees, rescind the trustees' goal in the reference manual.
Bianca Richards.
Yes.
Dean, Dean Serwin.
Yes.
Annie Chang.
Yes.
Dr. Malina.
Yes.
David Ewens.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And then number five is the review of the library administrative policies. There was several pages. So did you all get a kind of a chance to take a look at it and the red outs that the staff did? So we're, it's recommended that we review and approve the amendments to the local history of collection policy, rescind the policy for reproduction of historic photographs, and review and approve amendments to the policy on giveaway newspapers. And I believe that's probably, Olivia is here.
Yeah, so I invited Olivia to be here because she worked on the local history policy, which is the one of the most significance. But essentially, in a nutshell, we took the photographic reproduction policy, which is obsolete, and want to get rid of it, but took the pieces of it that are still relevant and added them into the single local history collection policy. And it's really a policy that has to do with how to access and use the collection. It's not about the scope of the collection or collection development. So Olivia can answer any questions that you have about the policy, if there's anything that you think might be missing or that we should think about differently. That's what we would like to know.
Dean.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm just, would it be fair to summarize the removal and amendment to basically say, instead of providing people with copies, we will give them, under certain circumstances, digital files?
That's what's in the policy. It's, where is it?
Are you referring specifically to photographic images, the reproductions? Yes, so point two, under reproduction of historical photographs, we give high resolution digital imagery productions, but we are not providing physical copies anymore. People pay for the digital reproduction, and then if they want to print it, that's fine. If they want to display it, that's fine, as long as they're not profiting from it unless they pay our commercial use fee, as long as they give us credit for it. So everywhere the image is displayed, whether it's for commercial use or not, it needs to say courtesy of South Pass City Public Library. But yes, it does say it's only going to be digital images.
Now, a question that arose for me in my own practice when I was chasing down rights to use a photo that came from a Texas library. They were very quick to say, hey, we can give you a copy of this. We can give you a high res copy, but we were hands off as to whether you actually have the right to use it or not. And I noted in the policy statement that there's nothing in there about whether we will provide as available information as to the provenance of it. Where did we get it? Do we know anything about who actually owns the copyright in it, et cetera?
Yes, so point five, under the reproduction of historical photographs, it is the responsibility of the user to, on their own, find the copyright information. I can say the vast majority of images in our collection, specifically the ones that get requested most frequently, we, they're either out of copyright, or we do not know originally where they came from, who took the photograph. So if you notice, we have a disclaimer on every Flickr image, which is typically what people use to look at and request images from. But it basically says, in so many words, we don't know who took this picture. We don't know what the copyright is. And that's a standard statement that, that most archives will use on all of their photographs. Unfortunately, we just, a lot of the original information that came with the photographs or a lot of information regarding who took them is long gone.
Do we know where they came, how we, how we acquired them into our collection? I guess would be a better question than ask.
So according to the previous library, and we used to have vertical files inside the library that were subject guides, that were each individual subject related to local history. A lot of the photographs were mixed into that collection, but there wasn't a lot of accompanying information. So we kind of, she, Chelsea, went through and reorganized the entire photograph collection, but I mean, it was boxes of photographs with not a lot of information.
So, so the answer is no, we really don't know where we got them from. Okay.
There may be some where we, we know who donated them, but for the most part, especially with the older photos, we have no idea.
So I have a question along the same lines. We can't change what's happened in the past. We have things that we may not know the provenance on. We don't know if we have the copyright. But going forward. Local history policy. I guess my question is this. If someone comes to us and they want to give us photographs, going forward, shouldn't we ask who has the right to use this, who has the copyright? And where it's coming from so that we don't continue to have this problem?
Yes, so we have a deed of gift form now that everyone has to sign whenever they donate anything to local history. And that includes a statement saying that they are saying they are the sole owner of this image, and they are conveying all of the rights to us. So that is required for any donation now. Like, for example, when we purchased the Rick Thomas collection, he signed an agreement saying that we own all of the photos now, but we do have to give him credit for those images. So that is why on our Flickr account, it says from the Rick Thomas solar motor collection, but we are now the owners of those images.
And is that here somewhere?
I'm not sure. Let me take a look.
It's not.
Provided materials.
Yeah, no, it's not part of the policy. I mean, we can make an appendix to the policy if you want to see it there, or if you just want to see it separately.
I'd be curious to see it. My follow up question, and thank you, Dr. Malina, for raising that, because that was where I was going. It's one thing, there's a thing called the first sale doctrine. I don't want to get too wonky into intellectual property law. But once you buy a work from someone, you can resell it, you can gift it, you can do whatever you want. But you don't necessarily acquire the copyright. And photographers very seldom actually transfer copyright. Anyone who's had a wedding or an event for your children, you know that. So someone who we acquire photos from saying, oh, I'm giving you all the rights, they can only give us what they own. So my request would be that we add, we amend that form to add a question of, did you create the underlying content that you're providing us, or did you purchase it from a third party? And if so, were they the creator? And do you know who the creator was? And did you acquire the actual copyright? Because that would be helpful for us so that we don't run afoul of other third parties.
Kathy, I don't know. I completely agree. So in the the policy, it references the local history collection development guidelines, and the collection development guidelines reference our deed of gift form. I don't know if that's something we should share, so you can take a look at what it already says. Because the deed of gift includes title information, copyright information, and then donor identification.
I think that we should, I don't know that we can share it now, because I don't think you can share your screen, number one, but also it's maybe a little bit outside the agenda item, but we can definitely share it next time and have a discussion. But I think that the deed of gift does cover all of that. For the most part, we're not dealing very often with, with creators. You know, the creator is nowhere to be found. And I think that's why it's often standard for archives to just basically say, the assumption is that we don't know who holds the copyright. And that's why it's up to the person using the image to, to take responsibility for it. Because so many of the photos are so old. But I, but yeah, I think the deed of gift does cover that, but we certainly would like to share it with you guys to get any input and feedback. So maybe we can do that either by email. I mean, I'm happy to send it out to you, as long as you don't email amongst each other. You can send back to.
Brown Act.
Yeah, as long as you just send back to Olivia and I your, your feedback, we can, Olivia can incorporate it, and then we can bring it to the next meeting for you to take a look at if you'd like.
I would appreciate that, because this is a common problem. And just throwing up our hands and saying, we don't know who owns this, and we're not sure where it came from, is not really helpful. To the extent that we can determine who has the copyright, it's really important. It's like the books in the library. We have lots of books in the library, but we don't own the copyright to those books. And if we let someone use them, it doesn't mean that they get the copyright. So the same thing applies to photos, or other artifacts for that matter. And to the extent that we know who they came from, at the very least, it's going to be helpful for whoever wants to use that. We just did a book recently I was involved in, and this was a big problem, trying to track down who owned the copyright. And oftentimes, we couldn't find out who you, who owned the copyright. And we took the chance and used the pictures anyway. Now, a lot of these pictures were more than 100 years old, so it wasn't that big of an issue. Most of them are probably PD, and actually, the updates to the Copyright Act provided a safe harbor. If you make, if you can document your efforts to find the copyright holder, then, then you're not infringing. You still might have to pay them money, but you won't be hit for infringement. But at least, at least this way, we're helping out the poor researcher who wants to use the photographs if we collect as much relevant information as we can going forward.
Yeah. And I do think the deed of gift does already allow, you know, provide for that. And, and Olivia's experience with this, you know, when we, when we made the agreement to have the newspapers digitized, she had to do the research on the copyright holders to make sure that we did have that safe harbor, because, you know, we couldn't find the copyright holders, but we needed to try to find them and then document it. So, so I think that, you know, it'll be helpful to have your feedback on the deed of gift, but I think it's, I think it covers a lot of these things already.
So then it sounds like Kathy, then you and Olivia will send us out something to look at. We'll look at it, give our comments, and send them back to you guys.
Yeah, I think that would work, because then we can have it ready for you to, you know, in a new form by the next meeting. So what we'll send you is what's called the Local History Collection Development Guidelines. And then the deed of gift is an appendix to that document. So we'll send you that whole thing.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Olivia, for your expertise there, too. Any other questions? Well, then are we going to, shall we then hold off on this? Or do we want to go ahead and approve of this with knowing more things are going to come? Or?
I, I mean, I would just say that I don't think that any changes that you make to the deed of gift would, would change the way that this is worded, because again, it's fairly standard to, for archives that are dealing with old things to say, you know, obviously, when we work with someone, if we do know where we got it, we would tell them. But to have it kind of in writing that fundamentally, bottom line is it's the user's responsibility. We're not going to be liable if they take something and use it incorrectly. I don't think that's going to change, no matter how we change the deed of gift. So I don't know that, I don't know that.
I would agree with your statement there, Kathy.
Right. Well, then let's, let's, we'll, we'll move on then on action item number five, the review of the library administrative policies. Do I have a motion and a second?
A motion.
Okay, thank you, Dean. And is there a second? I'll second. All right, so so for item number five, then Dean moved and I second. And.
Bianca Richards.
Yes.
Dean Serwin.
Yes.
Annie Chang.
Yes.
Dr. Malina.
Yes.
David Ewens.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, we're moving on to the discussion, and we have a lot of the budget report. So Kathy, I'll hand that over to you.
Yeah, so what, what I gave you guys, you know, we're still in sort of a strange period where we don't have a final budget approved for this fiscal year. So I can't just run the report from the city's financial system and send it to you, because all of those budget numbers are going to change hopefully next Wednesday, when the city council meets and approves the budget. My understanding is that the numbers that you see here are likely to, you know, these are the numbers that are going to be presented to the city council. The Finance Commission already looked at these numbers. So I, I just basically took them and put them into a spreadsheet. And so what you're seeing is the 2019-20 budget, just so you can kind of see comparison. The proposed budget, which again, hopefully will be adopted next Wednesday. And then our expenses year to date, and then sort of the balance and the percentage expended. So I guess I, everything is on track. We've been very conservative with our spending, and I think, you know, once the budget is approved, we have a number of things that we're going to quickly start spending money on, because we've been asked not to. So we have to quickly, you know, buy books, buy all kinds of things. But there's nothing, nothing that I see here that's out of the ordinary or that I'm worried about. So I guess I would open it up to you guys if you have questions.
Yeah. Kathy, I have some questions. So remind me what the fiscal year is?
Fiscal year is July 1 to June 30.
And I'm looking at this, and it looks like that, that in terms of salaries for permanent staff, we've expended, according to this, 49%?
Well, so the, the Finance Department hasn't loaded all of the payrolls only through the end of December. So this number is not correct. I could give you a my estimate of what the number is.
Let me ask the question another way then. Are we tracking in line with our proposed budget?
For full time, yes. For part time, no. And they're well aware of that. They didn't, I don't know where they, she, the Finance Director calculated this number for the part time budget. It's not the number that I gave her for the part time budget. And I told her, we are going to be at about $230,000, and that is what we asked for, and that's what we've gone for. And so she's aware that we're going to go over, we'll probably be under in the full time. But I'm very pleased with the part time budget, because basically, for the first time last year, we actually calculated how much does it cost to have our part time staff do what they need to do? And we came up with a number that actually turned out to be spot on last year. So that was really great. And then this year, because of the pandemic, we kind of had to adjust that number a little bit. And basically, it was taking Sundays out of the mix, because we're closed on Sundays.
Yeah.
So the number 230 reflected that change, and I think that's about exactly where we're going to be, is at 230. So. 196, but.
Another question I had was about, we've reduced the staffing from 10 positions to nine, and the assistant library is vacant and not funded. Does that mean we're not planning to fill that position this year?
The hope is that we are going to reallocate that position, to change that position, keep the full time position, but that it would be a different position. That, that's the decision that's sort of already been made, is that we're not going to have an assistant director anymore, but that we're going to make that position a different position that would be more useful to the library.
Because that was my next question. When I look at the organizational chart, I see the library director and the assistant director, the assistant reports directly to the library director, but all the other staff seem to report to the assistant director. So it almost looks like we've got two people doing the same job. What is the plan for that, that FTE then, if we're not going to have?
Well, we've talked about it a little bit, and it's, it's not, you know, you guys will need to weigh in on as well. But my preference has been to create someone, and I've actually been thinking, we've been thinking about it a lot lately and kind of changing our minds. We had thought we would create someone on the support services technology side, because we have, we do not have a deep bench there. We have someone who's very, very skillful, but they're very close to retirement. Hopefully not too close, but you know, in a few years. And there's no backup for that. And, and we really, in this day and age, need people with technology skills. So that was our plan, was to create a paraprofessional position. But in, as I've been thinking about it more, I would really, I think, like it to be a librarian, so that there's the growth, so that that person could potentially move into the senior position. So that would be, I don't have the org chart in front of me, but that's under support services. So that's my, that's what I would like. But I know some of the board members have other thoughts about what would be a better way to reallocate that position. And of course, we don't, you know, it's all a budgetary matter as well. But I'm happy.
Do we have a discussion of that at some point then?
Yeah, we can have a discussion of that. I think it'll tie in a little bit to the budget cycle. You know, I don't know if they have the funding to allow us to do it. I argued, please just don't eliminate the position from the org jar completely like that. I thought we were at risk of that happening. So luckily, they're, they're leaving that on the books as assistant director, and just counting it as vacant, and they're saving the money right now. But yeah, it's part of the budget discussion. And since we haven't even approved this year's budget, we haven't done any work really on next year's budget, but that should be starting very soon. My guess is that there may not be funding for, for us this year, but I don't know. I don't, I haven't.
But even if there's not, I think we should have a discussion about this position and have it ready, so that if the funding becomes available in the future, we know what we're going to do.
Yeah, I mean, we had started to draft up, draft this up, and then the former city manager left, and pandemic came, and things kind of fell apart. So yes, we should definitely have the discussion, and we can have it next month if you want to talk about it then, for sure.
So don't we also in our work plan, we need to start talking about like the strategic goals?
That's on our discussion agenda for a discussion item today.
Yeah, so the, so definitely the budget, you know. Yeah, I don't have my work plan. Was the budget in the work plan, too?
Or was it just? No, that's just one of your regular responsibilities, is to kind of weigh in and, and.
Kathy, the proposed budget column, when was that developed?
It's, it's very close to what I presented back in, you know, February, March of last year. So basically, what happened is, you know, we were asked to, to eliminate some spending because of the pandemic. So I think on an overall, it was about a 20% reduction in operating costs that came out of some things that we didn't, we didn't need the money. We didn't spend it the year before, so we thought we could get away with not spending it again. We took some money away from books and digital resources and periodicals. And then mid-year, or maybe even a little later than mid-year, once we had the interim finance director, she, we, each department revisited that budget that they had submitted many, many months ago. And a few changes were made because of that, either because of the pandemic, that we needed more money for COVID-related supplies. Or what else did we change? We changed mostly, the biggest change had to do with the COVID supplies. Pretty much everything else she left the same.
So really, the budget has been pretty fluid, you know, and to adjust it to the changing situations.
I mean, basically, the budget that, that did get adopted at the beginning of the fiscal year was a continuation budget of the exact budget of last year, which we knew was more than we would ever actually be given. So the, the message has been, you know, we couldn't spend as much as the books technically said we had to spend. So we've been sort of working in our minds with this, this budget the whole time.
So as, as we speak right now, you, you have a general kind of goal you're working towards through the end of this fiscal year. And if you get under a certain amount, the city's going to be happy. Is that, and have you been given that as the, if you've been given as the amount, your target is to be under, let's just use the one you have more control over, which is the operations and maintenance.
Yeah.
You get under 321,950. That, that's, that's what you're working towards, is that situation?
Yep, we're, yeah, we're going to spend as much of that as we can, as quickly as we can, as soon as it's approved.
Okay. So I did some, so you're holding off spending some of it, because the current run rate would indicate that you're going to come under by about 83,000, I think I figured out. But what you're saying is you're holding off certain expenditures until this city or the city council says, yes, you can spend that amount of money.
Correct. We were asked by the Finance Department not to spend money. So we have been.
I'm trying to equate here, what, what the goal is for the next few months, is the month, is it to hold it down to? What what the goal is for the next few months is the month, is it to hold it down to the minimum? Or you can spend the three hundred and twenty one thousand or three hundred and twenty two thousand.
Yes, that's that's our budget for the year. It's just we're getting it very late in the year, so we're going to have to spend very quickly now to catch up. And there are some things where we're we are over budgeted, which is good because we're going to use some of it for some things that maybe.
Having a budget doesn't mean you have to spend it.
No, we don't have to, but there are things we've been waiting to spend money on. So we're we're waiting for it to be approved so that we can go forward with those purchases.
Okay, so 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 you're looking for approval by the end of this month.
And then seventeen, hopefully.
Sorry?
March seventeenth is the city, the next Wednesday.
Some, yeah, yeah, some Patrick's Day or something around there. And and then you're ready to unleash so these expenses.
On a few things, yes. I mean, the the books and ebooks, it's very easy. Those are. Ready to go, ready to be ordered, just press the button and order it. The shelving for the children's room, that's ready to to go, just press the button and order it. We're still getting quotes on the shelving for the area across from the. The in the service desk. But we're trying to work on that again. We're trying to be ready to go so that as soon as it gets approved, we can move because we don't have a lot of time. But of course, if we, as long as we've. You know, had a contract signed within the fiscal year, we should be fine to, you know.
So as long as long as you purchase order a contract or something of that nature. It doesn't have to be accomplished by June thirty, I think.
Correct. Yeah. Okay.
I I had a general question and I apologize, I'm I'm very new to all of this and just getting my feet. Under me on it. In terms of the, and I I understand what you're you're saying, Kathy, about. You were asked to stop spending money to the extent that you possibly could. And you've got deferred expenses that you really wanted to be spending along. So in answer to Dave's question. Why you would just suddenly jump to it is because you've been waiting to spend that money. It's not that it's like the. Was that movie Falling Down where if we don't spend it, we don't get it back in our budget, so we have to spend it just to spend it. You're not doing that, I understand. But in terms of the. The changes that to to your operational manner. During the last year. Have there been significant? Savings where you really don't need to spend the money that had been previously budgeted?
I would say. You know, you can see line items are not, none of them are are huge. We've maybe spent. Well, we've spent less less on, while we have no budget for like conferences. Because the anticipation was, oh, you're not going to go anywhere. But of course, we do have a conference. It's just virtual. So we're going to take that from a different line item. But. You know, most of these things are are things that we still need to do, you know, there's not a lot on here. I I we're we're underspent. In building maintenance. Which is. That we put all the COVID stuff into building maintenance, but it seems to me like our equipment maintenance, we haven't had much. And maybe that is something about wear and tear, like we haven't had to have as many. You know, people come out.
You'd have to get the copier fixed.
Yeah, last year we had to have the door replaced for four thousand dollars and we haven't had anything like that this year. So. But for the most part, no, I mean, again, all the the reason we're so far under is because we've been. Very conservative. Maybe special department expense, we normally would have spent more. That's like. Kind of the everything bucket. So processing materials, things for the support services staff. Program related stuff, maybe some of that is a little bit less, but again, it's not. It.
The most most stuff just. Most of the stuff does not appear to be that far off of budget. There are a few things like the special department expenses low, postage is low, duplicating is low. I'm guessing maybe that's because you're going to do some mailings later in the year towards the summer programs or something, but. The the only thing that kind of worries me a little bit is is the equipment and maintenance being so low. And I just worry, you know, we want to be careful that we don't get ourselves in trouble by deferring maintenance and having things that break down because we didn't take care of them. So but otherwise, it looks like you're, you know, in the forty to sixty percent range on most most areas.
One area I have a question on Kathy.
Yeah.
The the work that's going on with the the app and the fine free on every, you know, the changes has been made to software and so on. Is that accounted for in this budget to be able to get it done?
Yeah, there's not really any cost associated associated with that. That's just staff time. So or I shouldn't say that. Yes, the the. The once the app goes live, our annual maintenance fee does kick in, but that's budgeted for. So that's our.
Changes for the fine free library that is being done with the.
Those services, they offered some consulting services for for free to help us with that. So there was no real cost associated with that. So yeah, the the only cost that we have related to either of those things are are included in the budget. That would come out of the contract services where we're, you know, we've still got thirty one thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Which is more, again, some of these things are. It's more than we needed, but better safe than sorry. So we may have asked for more than we actually thought we needed. The equipment maintenance, that's always been sort of for emergency things that come up, not. You know, ongoing maintenance, but it's something to think about. When you said that, I thought to myself, hmm, that's a good point. Maybe we should, you know.
Do you have scheduled maintenance like, you know, like for your car, you know, you you know that you've got to. Change the oil, change the tires, change the brakes on on certain regular things. So do you have a schedule for the various? Pieces of equipment, major pieces of equipment?
Public Works does. I don't.
Okay.
The Works Department does.
Kathy, for the capital expenses that are look like they're unspent, is that the bookshelves you were talking about?
Yeah, that that got a little bit complicated and things are kind of in funny places, but. Last fiscal year, we received funding for. A pretty significant project, which is we need to replace our emergency egress lighting system. And that project didn't happen last fiscal year. So. When they adopted the appropriations budget, the money was automatically there. And somehow in this process, they took some of it away. So when I said to her. You took that money away, but we're already contracted due to the project. They gave it back. So yes, the the money looks a little weird, but you the total twenty seven thousand dollars that's there. Part of that is for that emergency egress lighting system. And then the rest of it is for the shelving. Shades in the conference room, but in reality, a a lot of that is probably also going to come out of special department expense. Like we're just going to move some money around. To get the things done that we need to get done.
So you need to get those things done before June thirtieth this year to you have to spend all of that down like if.
Well, again, I can send it down or I can, again, as long as we've contracted and the project is in process, we're fine. And even even if not, we can always ask them to. Roll it to the next fiscal year, or we can simply ask for the money again next fiscal year and explain that we didn't get the job done. But I'm not too worried about. You know, the projects, the the egress lighting contract and purchase order was just issued today. So that should be happening as soon as they get the equipment, which may be like six weeks, five, six weeks. And the shelving should be pretty. Straightforward also. It's not a huge project. We already have the bids for the conference room drapes or window coverings. So most things are sort of already in motion.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right. Thanks. Thanks, Kathy, and everybody and all and all your good observations. Everybody else and your input. Okay, and then. Discussion number seven, the strategic planning and the parcel tax renewal timeline.
Yeah, so I wanted to bring this up because. You know, we talked last time about the idea that the the. Parcel tax things would start to kind of happen in. What would be like June? Twenty twenty two, right? Isn't that what you said for a for a November election?
Right.
And the strategic plan goes through twenty twenty two. So I'm just thinking about or I'm asking us to think about and you to think about the timing of those processes. Like, I don't know if we would want to do a strategic plan before we know whether we. Whether measure L is renewed. Or do you want to do a strategic plan so that that's part of? The education that you give to the community. But you know, it's four hundred, you know, three hundred and fifty, four hundred thousand dollars of our budget. So if that, for some reason, we're not renewed. And we had just done a strategic plan. Would we then not have the funds to to fulfill our strategic plan? So I wanted to have you guys think about that, whether we should. Put the strategic planning process off until after. Measure L. And also just from a staffing perspective and a and a board perspective and even the friends, it it's it would be a lot to do strategic planning. Concurrently with measure L renewal, and it might confuse the public to have. Measure L happening. And then we're also asking them all kinds of questions about, you know, how did what kind of library do you want and? You know, trying to engage them in the strategic planning at the same time that we're trying to educate them about the library and and what measure L is about. So I wanted to just have that discussion with you guys and and get your thoughts and feedback.
Well, can we? Is there a? Is there a rule about the strategic planning that we have to get it done?
I don't think there's any rule, no. They've definitely years before.
On the other hand. If I am in the public. I think I would like to know that my library committee is doing strategic planning and planning ahead. And if we're going to ask people for money. It would be nice if we could tell them what we'd like to do with it. So I I think that I would rather go forward with the strategic plan. And if the measure doesn't pass and we don't have the funding, then we deal with that later. But I I think.
Yeah, roll back the intent.
Yeah.
So maybe we so we probably would want to bump up the strategic plan. Even sooner than, I mean, again, the strategic plan goes through December twenty twenty two. So we would want to do it early in twenty twenty two, or or, you know, before for measure L.
Yeah, Kathy, and thank you, Dr. Melina, for raising that point. My, the reason I did my seesaw when you were saying it earlier was, you know, having. And Sally is on here and I think Ellen's still on here too. You know, you've been through the and and Diana, Mayor Mahmoud has been through the the ringer with us on these various. Measures that we've gone through in the city. One of the key issues that we just went through. On the last one was whether or not to have a survey done. And the strategic plan survey. Could actually serve as the measure L survey. Because we'd be able to gauge the the importance and the level of interest in the public. And then we could utilize those results or share those results with the committee. And then the committee could utilize those results to. Put forth the best foot for the renewal of measure L. Hey, look, you've you've already said. That you want A, B, and C. Well, we can't do A, B, and C without measure L. So if you want A, B, and C, like you already said you did. We need measure L. And I would, that could be very useful.
Dean, I would I would put that a little differently. I think that we want to survey the public. To find out what they want from the library. And. That information could be used by all kinds of people. If the people that are proposing funding the measure want to use that information. You know, they're welcome to do it, but we're not doing it specifically for measure L. We're doing it because. As part of the strategic plan, we want to know what the community wants.
Yeah, that's my, that's my point.
I agree.
That's my point.
That that they're totally up that they should not be closely tied together.
No, I'm not. I'm not suggesting that we say, hey, we did this survey and and this is what we're doing. But if there's. They the strategic plan survey is a public document, correct?
Exactly.
So that public document is utilized, you know, again, I'm an IP lawyer. I do trademark work for people. I file a trademark application for somebody. And they get they start getting all these unsolicited things telling them, oh, you need to spend money on this and you need to spend money on that or I. You know, and none of it's real because people just bought that list, right? So it's the same kind of a of a thing. Hey, the library did this strategic plan because it's being the good steward of. The interest of the community. And oh, well, we're the committee that's trying to help fund the library. And as part of that strategic plan. You said, it's not like we're we're the 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 two hands are not holding each other, but finding their way towards each other in the dark of the night.
So it sounds like, I don't want to speak for everybody, but it. Are we all in kind of an agreement that we want to? In court have the strategic planning along with the parcel tax renewal together as we're talking about everything. So if we're going to do that, then what would? The timeline?
I'm not taking, say it another way, and it's not.
Timeline.
Together. It's that we don't, we we don't need to delay.
Yeah.
That's what I meant.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm not, I wouldn't take a position on the parcel tax, but I do think that. We should go forward with the planning process. I do think we should do a survey because we need. To be informed as to what the public wants. We might find out that they want. Fewer books and more digital stuff. But we need to know as part of our planning process. And that will probably inform anyone that wants to raise money. Whether it's, you know, the the measure L committee or the friends of the library. Or anybody else. But I I think regardless of what's happening with those things, we need to move forward with the plan. And we should have a survey.
So why don't?
I agree. Can I, so can I raise one question to Kathy? I agree with the the need to move forward with the strategic plan. Could I have clarity on what the board's role is with the parcel tax? Like, what is within our decision making around the parcel tax and? What can we speak to here in this in this committee meeting?
So my understanding is that. The board, I mean, as 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 appointed and as appointed officials, you can't advocate for the parcel tax, but you can help. The city and the library think about what messages we do want to convey, what kind of educational messages we want to convey to the public to help them. Know what the library is and what the library does and what it offers. As individuals, private individuals, you can take a position on it, but as a board. And as in in your capacity as board members, you can't take a position. So it's really. About, I think, identifying a strategy. But I also think the city must have some role in this as well. I mean, I haven't gone through this with the city, so I've not done it before. But you know, the idea is.
Informational.
Yeah.
Not to interrupt. What what we cannot as a board take an advocate's position. But as a board, we can and should provide information to the community as to the services that the library provides. And the source of the funding for those services.
Right. So when I worked in Glendale and and we had our UUT. On the ballot. The city took the lead on how are we going to educate the public about this? And then different departments contributed. Facts and figures and information that they then packaged into very interesting and compelling. Educational material that taught people about what the police department does, what the library does, what the fire department does. So I think that that's. That's where we would be focusing. We would be focusing on how do we educate people. About the library and make sure that people understand the value that it brings to the community and everything that it has to offer. So there would be, I think, some brainstorming around that and thinking about. What, how could we effectively share that message, which, you know, theoretically, we're trying to share that message all the time and. You know, it's not like we we're just going to make that happen once, you know, just for this purpose. But I think. It would be a conversation about what what anything is. Is there anything special that we want to do?
Yeah.
I happen to be. Right, I happened to be the council liaison the last time. That the parcel tax was set for renewal. And it was more complex then because. The tax did not have any acceleration built into it. And so there was a question. Of well, and as I recall, it had been about fifteen years from the time that the tax was first. Established. And so obviously, there was lost inflation that was captured. And so one of the major issues. And so one of the major issues was how much of that inflation, had, had the tax been adjusted for inflation, how much of that do we want to capture? And so the committee played a major role. The committee did most of the legwork in developing the contours of the proposed measure, but then brought that proposal to the Library Board of Trustees, who then provided input. And, and so there was coordination between the committee and the trustees. And I will offer that unfortunately, we were conservative, I think probably unduly conservative, because as I recall, we only decided to capture about seventy-five percent of what would have been the actual inflation-adjusted amount of the tax had the measure been written to provide for that. And of course, now it is inflation-adjusted.
But that makes it easier for us. We don't have to ask for that, that increase now because it's already built in.
Yeah.
That's always the bane of these measures.
Yeah, this should be a lot easier than the last time for that reason.
And to answer your, to add a final nuance to what you asked, when it comes around, if you're, if you want to, no one is required to, when it comes around, you as an individual can endorse the renewal. And as an individual, you can indicate that you have a particular title that is not the same as you as a trustee. So you can say Anna Chang Long, comma, library trustee. That's not library trustee Anna Chang Long endorsing. That's something that we are constantly arguing with the naysayers about. And the board cannot endorse, but for example, you could sit on the committee as an individual.
And we, and we do know for sure then the election is in November twenty twenty-two. Yes, I believe that is correct. Okay, all right.
That's my recollection.
Okay, okay.
Got one whole year off, Bianca?
Yeah.
We had a whole year, twenty twenty-one, woo-hoo, with no election.
So maybe what I'll do for the next meeting is let's, I'll try to put together kind of a schedule of what that might look like. And again, I, I don't know because I'll just do my best and then we'll talk about it.
All right, that sounds good, all right. And then, number eight, the Friends of the Library letter to the Board of Trustees. So I believe, was this a discussion with Sally and Ellen or?
I think so. Sally asked me to share the letter with you guys. And so we just went ahead and did it as part of the pack instead of sending it to you separately. So I, yeah, I would turn it over to Sally to speak to this and answer questions if you have them.
Yes, and I had invited Ellen Torres to join me as a representative of the Friends as well, past president and longtime board member. At the last meeting, there were quite a few questions about the finances and how the donations from the Friends work. And I know Annie had asked about the audit. And we are a separate, you know, five oh one C three organization, not under the auspice of the city or the Board of Trustees. To make it simpler, we put together the letter that explains how the finances work, how we work with the library director on setting the budget for the year as far as what donations, what they would need for the following year, and all the restrictions that are on our various accounts. So we had put that together, hoping that that would clarify how the funding works from the Friends. And we're, Ellen and I are available here if you have any questions.
I do have one. The, what is it, the B F, the Book Endowment Fund?
Yes.
Yeah, and in the letter, it states that it is one of the funds in which the principal should not be reduced. Am I correct?
Exactly.
But then somewhat contradictory, it talks about that three hundred and forty thousand in the B F, four percent was spent last year. And it does look, from looking at the funds in the, well, help me there. I mean, that seems like that that's twelve thousand dollars being taken out of the principal.
That was the accrued interest.
Accrued interest, and you're getting fourth, you're getting four percent?
It's what was available. There may have been some funding that was left over from the year before. I had taken that from a financial report.
Well, endowments are also often invested. I don't know how they're managing their money, but a four percent draw off of an endowment is not unusual.
Okay, I would agree, I would agree, except when I looked at the, the the investments, the investments are typically way below four percent annual.
Yes, we are very-
Very, very, very conservative, extremely conservative.
I think maybe you're looking at how much did we spend total? And then that amount is four percent of the endowment? But that amount is not one year's worth of accrued interest. It's piled up over several years.
So yeah.
So to get to that four percent, you hold off on the money being delivered to the library. If it's piled up, it's, it's filing up somewhere in a cash account, let's just say. And then eventually it's turned over. Because my recollection in a previous conversation was that you get about six thousand annually from the two funds, the Book Endowment Fund and the Technical Fund. And yet, this would lead you to believe that you get twelve thousand dollars just from the book fund.
There was, for whatever reason, David, there were a number of years where the library didn't spend the money. There was, we didn't have anything to spend it on. So there was quite a large amount of available funds, available interest income or whatever income from the fund, that, that's how we, yeah, so that's, it's, you're right. It's about six thousand dollars a year combined, but we're talking about several years' worth of accumulation that got spent, and that's where they're coming up on getting it.
So if it was just interest, you would have had a lot less to spend.
Right, in a normal year. And I think we sort of spent that now.
So let's just get to the point that how much does the Friends make on the endowments annually in interest? Book fund and technical fund separately? How much is the amount that you, that is made from those accounts annually?
We would have to get the reports for you. There's different funds and-
Just the two, just the two.
I do not have that in front of me.
So Dean, are you the, are you the liaison to the Friends?
Am I? Yes.
You could ask them that at the Friends meeting.
I can.
That way, that gives them a little chance to do a little research.
I'm not asking for it right now, I'm just asking that someone would get that.
It was, it was brought up at our annual meeting, how much? So we could go back and look in those minutes. And I would agree that it was around eighteen hundred in tech fund and the balance would be the book fund. And I can address the carryovers when the staff was, the library was understaffed. They were not spending the money that, right away. And that was a little before Kathy's time. So I think that we've worked really hard and we've changed our policies. So they, they wouldn't know until like the end of the year. So now we're telling them at the beginning of the year how much interest or how, that was made. And now they can spend it. But the policy in the past was, it wasn't even given them to, you know, towards the end of the year.
And the policies were very restrictive about what we could buy. And that was part of the issue. And you guys did some changes to your policies to allow us to buy a wider variety of things.
It used to be only books of certain quality. And we changed it so it could be now like technical, like with technology and ebooks and, and stuff like that. But it, our endowments were very restrictive, as are our bylaws.
Okay, thank you.
And Sally, I think you can, we're going to be meeting with Lloyd from our Schwab account to maybe think about changing our investment policies a little bit. Yes, they did bring that up, and we are going to be addressing that.
Yeah, they're very conservative, so they're not getting four percent. I don't think.
No.
Four percent is something else.
Thanks for putting this together, Sally. It's really helpful to see all of the detail behind it, what the intention is behind the reserves that are, you guys are probably saving up. I'm curious, I think like the overall conversation last time was about the Twenty First Century Committee and related to Friends. And, you know, where does that committee go? Is the Friends the right place? And we kind of went into this conversation around, you know, what's Friends currently managing to? I don't, you know, I'm starting to catch up about the Restoration Concert Series, but, you know, I understand that there's some like trying to figure out where's the right place for that. And I'm just curious, as you were preparing this, has there been any thoughts? And is this the place that we need to discuss the Twenty First Century Committee in relation to, you know, what you all are managing to financially? Sorry.
You mean, is this meeting?
I guess maybe that's my point of clarification for Kathy. Is this where we're talking, why we're talking about this? And I think that's why we were asking those questions.
I think that we need to put that on the next meeting agenda. I know that the Friends meeting in February, they talked about this. And then I know they've subsequently had some meetings with, I think David was there and Bianca. So I, I didn't think they were ready maybe to, to have that discussion at this meeting again. But maybe we can put that on next, the next agenda.
You're talking about the Twenty First Century? You're talking about Restoration Concerts?
Twenty First Century.
I was, I had some remarks to make during the, our time to represent the Friends.
That's great.
Okay.
So yeah, that's what we can do tonight. Sally can talk about it when she makes her comments and, but that's not what this item was meant to be.
Right. The Restoration Concerts is not even in the same thing as the the Twenty First Century. There's, there's no question about whether the Restoration Concerts should stay or not. I think that's where there's a little confusion. And that's part of the reason I was asked to join, is that the Twenty First Century had that summer festival. That was the only issue. The Restoration Concerts have been in place for twenty-some years. It was just that the summer festival became a little bit more than the Friends was willing to, to basically take on. They were raising a lot of money, but it was not being raised for, for the Friends. So I'm happy to talk to anybody individually about that if you have any further questions.
I think, any other comments? Thank you again, Sally, and I know Kristin, your finance officer, you guys put this together. We appreciate it. Are we? Okay, moving on to library operations update.
I'm going to try to share my screen. I don't know if it's going to work. The reason that I was having trouble at the beginning of this meeting is because my electricity became unplugged and it booted me out of the meeting. So I'm not a host, but I, maybe I will be able to. I'm hoping that Sean was able to allow me to do this. Hang on, sorry. Now, no, well, it's telling me I'm not connected again.
Dawn, can you maybe make, try to make her a host again?
Here we go. I'm in, just let me get back over here. Let me share my screen. So I just wanted to go over a few things, and I thought the easiest way to do that would maybe to do it like this. So I wanted to let you know about our digitization project and where we are with that. It's very exciting. Olivia has gone, but I thank her profusely for making this happen for us. So I think I've mentioned before that we made an agreement with newspapers.com, which, and in, also with the California Digital Newspaper Collection at UC Riverside. And we sent them about twelve reels of microfilm to scan. And those have been scanned. And as you can see here, these are the, these are the contributions. So if you look on the right, those, that's the list of the publications that we contributed. And then on the left, where you see the, the actual papers, those are the papers that we now have accessible here in the library that are full-text searchable. So it's really exciting, you know, for years, if, you know, we had kids this summer that wanted to research, you know, sundown towns and racism and, and you couldn't really keyword search the content that we had. And now they'll be able to. And, and we have access to years that we didn't contribute. So other institutions maybe contributed. Like we, for the South Pasadena Review, we submitted a segment, but you can see we have access for, you know, many more years than, than what we submitted. So we're really excited about this. It is in library only for the first three years. But after that, it's going to be available freely on the web. So that's one thing I wanted to share with you. I also wanted to mention again, just the timing on this project, which is also something Olivia worked on. This is the California Revealed Digitization Project. She received a grant. We don't actually get funding, but they're covering all the costs. They're going to be digitizing the South Pasadena City directories from eighteen ninety-three to nineteen forty-nine. And also, all of the South Pasadena High School yearbooks that are in the public domain, so up to nineteen twenty-four. And so those will be digitized and then available online and keyword searchable for everybody as well. And that's, I think, going to be exciting for people. And I wanted to quickly give you an update about the app. So this is what it looks, well, the left side, obviously, the left side picture is what it looks like. This is, the other picture is the print piece that we made to put in people's takeout bundles. But the app is live. We haven't announced it. We're doing kind of a soft launch with the staff so that they can make sure they're very comfortable with it before we let the public start using it so that they'll be able to assist people. But it really works wonderfully and we're really excited about it. And I think we'll be launching it and publicizing it starting next week. So, and if you guys want to start using it, or anybody in the public, it is available. So you can go to the App Store and just search South Pasadena. There's only like five apps that come up and we're one of them. So we're excited about that. It's really great. It's just going to be great to have it handy. One thing, there's a few pieces that, a few pieces of functionality that it doesn't have that they're hopefully developing. For example, you can't update your personal information via the app. So it's really important right now that we get people to enter their email addresses so that they'll get their overdue notices and things like that. But they can't do that through the app. But hopefully, that's a feature that is coming. And one of the features that's really great that I think is going to be a hit is you can store all the family members' barcodes in the same app. So you can have, so Annie will be able to open her thing and see all the kids' names and see all the stuff, what they have checked out. You know, usually people come up to the desk with like four library cards. It might be this one, it might be this one, it might be this one, we never know. So that'll be great. And if you want to start playing with that now, you're welcome to do so. Just a quick update on find free. So this is the print piece that's been going in people's takeout materials. It just kind of helps them understand the new timeline related to overdues. People are, I'm sort of surprised, I suppose I shouldn't be, but people don't quite understand, you know, oh, well, then do I, I don't ever have to return it? Due date, you know, things are still due, you're just not going to be charged. So we had to do quite a lot of explaining, but this tries to make it simple for people to understand what that timeline is going to look like, what kind of notifications they're going to get and when they're going to get them and what will happen if they don't return the materials. So we're in good shape with that. And we basically, we purged finds of all kinds prior to twenty eighteen. And then for the past three-plus years, we purged overdue finds, but kept all the finds on the books for lost or damaged items or collections, agency referral fees. And that's pretty standard. We talked to a lot of other libraries before we embarked on this. And keeping, keeping finds on the books for about three, between three and four years is- And keeping, keeping fines on the books for about three, between three and four years is standard. So we probably, that's, that's our thinking is that we'll, every, at the end of the third year, which will be right at the beginning of a fourth year, we'll purge the prior year. So that's, that's good. People are excited about that. It's nice that we don't have to charge people overdue fees. And then, and the overdue notices have been implemented. So if you have anything checked out, you should start seeing notices along this, based on this timeline. And that is what I have with slides. And then, well, I know that you guys asked last time about signage for the park. So I just wanted to show you what has been put up. This is thanks to the Parks Commission and Sheila, the Director of Community Services. But these are the masks signage that went up in different parks around the city. There's one on the community room side, and then there's this one on the senior center. There's nothing really over by the picnic tables, the library picnic tables. So we may look at what we can do over there. There's not anywhere really to hang anything over there. So it's a bit of a challenge, but we're going to keep thinking about what we might get to do in that area. But this is an improvement to have these in the parks around the city. And that is the last slide that I have for you. And then let me see, I think I have a few of the things that I wanted to mention. The Rialto event last night, you guys were talking about it before we started. We had 400 and, I think it was like 438? It was 38, but then it was more later. So we had over 400 people registered and we had about 230 people who watched it live. So it was really well attended. It was people from all over the country, people from Canada, people from Mexico. People love their historic theaters. So it was really, really fascinating and Scott did a lovely job. So that's available to stream if you want to stream it. We have the crowdsourced community poem, which I think we talked about, but that's now launched. So we're receiving input from, and contributions from members of the public right now and sending them to Ron Kirchi, our poet laureate, who's going to make them into a poem. So the deadline for submitting those contributions is next Friday. And the California Reader Medal Story Times are happening this week. And the voting on the best, the top book is this week. So the kids and their families hopefully are participating in that. We have a journaling workshop coming up for teens. So that will be a virtual presentation. And it will have closed captioning. We got an inquiry from someone who requested closed captioning, which was great because that kind of gave us the impetus to figure out the details of how to do that. So we now have that capacity to be able to do closed captioning on our Zoom or, well, on our Zoom for sure. I don't know about Crowdcast, but on Zoom for sure. And then we have our comic book discussion club for adult readers, which first meeting is April 1st. And support services, basically find free. That's what they've been busy with. And that's, that's all I have under library operations.
Thank you. And you have the next point too now for the COVID update.
COVID, our COVID update. So the big, huge news is that just today, we received an email from the state librarian, Greg Lucas, saying that according to the state, library workers that work with students are eligible for vaccines. And that's pretty much all of us, you know, I, you know, we all work with students, you know. So I think that that's the message is that we can all get vaccinated. Whether the county is on board with that, I'm not sure, but I think they probably will have to get into, in line with the state. About a week and a half ago, maybe two weeks ago, maybe it's a week and a half ago, the director of the county library system let us directors know that she had, she had worked with the public health department to get permission for children's, specifically just children's librarians, which was a little bit more narrow. And the instructions that we received were very, very specifically only children's librarians. They have to live in LA County, which is not true if you're a food or agricultural worker and you live outside the county, but you work in LA County. So we got a lot of very specific instructions, which only really made like three or four of our staff members eligible. So it was a big deal today to find out that now really pretty much everybody is eligible. So we'll start working on that. I mean, staff will, I've got two staff that have vaccinations tomorrow. We already had a number of staff that for whatever reason have gotten vaccines on their own. But we'll see what the county does. If the county agrees to let all library workers essentially be part of the 1B education and childcare group, then we'll be eligible to go to the county pods. In the meantime, you know, we probably will seek vaccinations in the pharmacies and things like that. So that's a big, a big thing because that, of course, makes everyone feel a lot more comfortable about in-person services. With the county moving to red tier for a lot of libraries, that is a trigger for them to start doing some limited in-person services. At this time, the only library still that's doing in-person is Alhambra. But I think we're going to start to see a lot of libraries in early to mid-April starting to do some in-person services. But again, very limited, you know, we're talking about computer use and browsing materials, you know, desk transactions, but not, not sitting, not studying, no study rooms. But we'll see. I'm hoping that if they go into red tier middle of next week, which is what they expect, I'm hoping they will update the library guidelines and give us some specific instructions about what we can and cannot do. But I know we're kind of a small slice of the pie. So I'm sure they're busily trying to do all these guidelines for these big sectors. So it may be longer before they come back with any library guidelines that are related to the red tier changes. But I do expect that we will start to see some libraries open. So that is what we're thinking about, you know, we've already been thinking about this for a long time. And we probably also will start with our computer use, which is what we had planned before the surge happened in the winter. And then as hopefully our staff get vaccinated, that will kind of dovetail maybe with some other in-person services. The other update that came from the county today related to the red tier changes are that people will be, you could have indoor gatherings of three households masked and socially distanced. So, I mean, in theory, we could have a storytime in the community room for three families, which we probably wouldn't do because we're not going to do something for just three families perhaps. But it is a big change and it does open up perhaps the Restoration Concerts. People want to do a concert in the community room and they haven't been able to do that. But this may, may enable them to do that. So, so that's sort of where we are with COVID.
I think one question on COVID.
Yeah.
Have you ever been able to get from the city, the capacity for the library to be able to translate it to, if they say you can open for 15, 20% capacity, what that translates to?
I need to follow, no, the answer is no. No one in the city seemed to have that answer. But a gentleman from the fire department has offered to help us come up with that number. So I need to call him and have him come over and help us come up with that number. So we'll do that. It's on my to-do list like for next week. As, as is the HVAC stuff, I have tried to get some, an evaluation of our HVAC system to determine what percentage of the air intake is from outside, how much is recirculating. These are the things that the public is going to want to know and the staff certainly want to know. So I did get, instead of trying to get them to do it for me, they gave me some references to some HVAC companies. And we're just going to pursue that on our own to get somebody to come in and make sure we understand what our HVAC system is doing and not doing so that we can make good decisions about do we need air filters? Or, you know, what other things do we need? So those are two of the big hurdles. And then, of course, the shelving and the situation with quarantining materials and the way that the takeout bundles are currently being stored, as we've said before, is not very compatible with having people in the building. So as soon as the council approves the budget and we can get working on installing shelving across from the service desk, that's going to be a big part of this too. Which isn't to say that it's impossible to have some in-person services, but we will have to do a lot of figuring out and moving around. And, and so that's going to take some time for us to figure out. And staff are very reticent about not, I have some staff that are not inclined to come back to work if the public are in the building and the staff haven't been vaccinated. So you have some challenges that we have to work through. And trying to help people be reasonable about the level of risk and to understand that the risk is very low. And just trying to work through some of people's fears and anxiety about that is part of it. But again, I'm hoping that it all sort of dovetails with getting vaccinated. So that was good news to get today. Because, you know, yeah, I mean, we obviously, the safety of the staff is huge, as is the safety of the public. But at this point, you know, we're talking about 1,000 cases a day in a county that has 11 million people. You know, the likelihood that you're masked and you're appropriately distanced, you know, anecdotally from other libraries and even from grocery stores, people are not spreading it in the workplace if those protocols are being appropriately followed. Right? So the risk is lower than, I really think, you know, based on, again, anecdote, it's anecdotally. I mean, I've seen some studies as well, but anecdotally from grocery store people that I've talked to and from other libraries, like Alhambra, that's been open this whole time. They've had people get sick, but not at work. They got sick elsewhere and then it didn't spread at work. So the protocols are working. They've been open for more than two months.
I'm sure you'll have then more in our April meeting. I'm sure you'll have more.
Yeah, I'm thinking, I forget what our spring break is here, but it definitely looks like a lot of libraries are looking at like mid-April. So I'm assuming we'll probably be on that same timeline because I can't imagine. And these are the smaller libraries, the county and LAPL, I don't think they will. They just have bigger challenges, I think. They can't maybe move as easily or quickly to make these changes. They may be still, especially the county, a lot of those staff may still be deployed as disaster service workers. And that may be true of LA City library staff too. So we may see, I'm thinking, the smaller libraries opening before the big systems.
Well, that's good news. And then some of us will just have to keep, we're still on the waiting list because who knows when I'll be vaccinated. So hopefully by May or June, hopefully.
Well, it does seem like the, they're releasing, they have more doses and releasing them, so.
But I'm fine waiting. So, okay, well, thank you for that. That, well, that's, you know, sounding like some good news. And item number 11, the 2021 Library Board of Trustees Work Plan Activity Review.
I just put that on there because I know last year, you know, David had wanted to have standing, a standing, you know, standing items to kind of check in on our work plan. And I thought maybe what I would do going forward is maybe we could do a little spreadsheet or something where we just kind of document any steps we've taken related to the different items. But I didn't do that for this meeting. I don't know that we need to spend any time on this really. I mean, we, we talked about the strategic planning and what we're going to do next. We approved a few policies. So I think we, unless anybody has questions or wants to talk about that, I think we can move on.
No, I like that idea. So yeah, we'll move on to that. So, okay. Lost my agenda here, sorry. Oh, wrong communications. Okay. I'll start here as your board president. I just wanted to, I don't know if all of the commissions, if you got a, an email request from WISPA, Women Involved in South Pasadena Political Action, asking commissioners to do a couple of lines of what's happening in your commission. As you know, I was involved with WISPA for years and years and years. And so I just jumped right in and answered it, didn't even bring it up to any of you. I just wrote out quickly about the fine free. I just copied and pasted and sent it on to WISPA for their newsletter that the library was happy that this one item got done, the fine free. So going forward, I won't do that again. I will make sure that it's communicated. But I just got, I was so used to WISPA, I just kind of jumped to it. So I apologize. Yeah, so that's my board communication.
I mean, maybe next month we can put it on the, the agenda to decide if there's a person who's going to take the responsibility and maybe it is the chair. You know, that doesn't, that makes sense.
And I would recommend, I would strongly recommend that you do that because otherwise you run the risk of Brown Act violations. So it would be best to designate someone. And Bianca, I think you would likely be the most logical.
And I did check with the city manager about this and kind of gave him a heads up that WISPA was, was doing this. So he communicated with all the commission liaisons and gave some feedback about how to proceed. So we're good. But yeah, if, if, I don't think it's an action item. I think it could just be a thing. I don't think we need to vote, you need to vote on it.
No, I just wanted to just put, for transparency sake, I just didn't even think. And I said, oh yeah, I used to do that all the time for WISPA. I used to get up and just talk about the library. So I just did it automatically. So. Okay, so let's just go around. I'm just looking at my screen here. David, do you have any communications?
No, I just want to mention that I attended the Rialto thing last night. And I wanted to compliment Olivia. I mean, she did a wonderful job here in the meeting today. And she did an outstanding job, you know, with that helping on that presentation, fantastic presentation. And when the technical glitch ended at the end, she handled that so well. And then to see the email go out today with the answers to the questions, her follow-up was amazing. Very, very good. So let's just put that in a minute somewhere. I know she's not here to hear it, but maybe she'll read it in a minute.
Thank you. Thank you for acknowledging her. She's, she's a gem and she did a fantastic job. And we, we knew by about 6:40 that we were going to have some technical difficulties and she was cool as a cucumber. I was a little bit, getting a little sweaty and nervous. But she was, she was like, well, if it goes down, here's what I'm going to do. I'm going to do this. She was, she had a plan. So she was fantastic. So thank you. We'll definitely.
She was unflappable.
Yeah. I tell you, she just, and she gets so much done. She's amazing.
Annie, how about you, Annie?
Just thanks Kathy for the update on COVID. That was really amazing to hear where we are and kind of what you're planning for. I wonder at some point, once you guys are done with the anti-racism training that I think the staff is going through, it'd be great to have an update around. You know, not anything long, but just maybe some key takeaways, staff's feeling about the things that have been learned. That'd be great.
Yep. Dean?
Nothing really to add. Everybody's sort of covered my points.
Okay. And Mario?
I really want to thank the people from the Friends of the Library. That letter was very helpful.
Welcome. Okay, and Sally?
Yes, just a couple of things the Friends are doing. We just sent out a newsletter and I hope you all receive one by email. What we plan to do for this year. And another plan we have is April, you know, is library staff appreciation and library, library week. So the Friends are planning an event to, to give them some kudos. And then I wanted to make some comments on the status of the 21st Century Committee. The board met this Monday on the topic. And David Ewen's attended with Bianca. And David gave a brief presentation about the background. He has a lot of experience with that. And then they signed off and we continued our meeting. The board was very appreciative of David's suggestions, clearly based on some good experience that he has and provided a roadmap for the Friends. He said, there are reasons for caution about jumping into this. And the Friends agree. Several factors cause the Friends to not rush into fully activating the committee at this time. The 21st Century Committee does exist. But the library's not being open. The forthcoming transition we have with the city management and the pandemic-related economic issues and the insecurity cause us to proceed. and the insecurity cause us to proceed carefully. This is reinforced by the Friends' past experience in investing in the library expansion, which we did several years ago to fund most of the design by Doug Ewing and only to find out that there were no means to implement those plans. Instead, the board plans to activate an exploratory committee to determine first what the current vision is for the library. Is, is the goal to just up, upgrade, continue the remodeling of the first floor? Or expand, which was the, the previous vision? And what changes will be in effect once the pandemic recedes? A plan must be developed and agreed on by all the parties and priorities necessarily will have to be reestablished. We won't be able to engage people in our committee unless we all know what the goals are. So we have a committee now of five assembled people to begin this exploratory process. In the meantime, we will launch smaller projects, such as completing fundraising for a tablet laptop dispensing kiosk that the library has asked for, which is about $45,000. And hopefully in time for the library reopening. So that's, that's where we are with this project. And I thank you for your assistance with this and your support. And if you have any questions, Ellen and I are, are here to answer them.
I don't have a question, but just a comment, Sally, that it occurs to me that the strategic planning process will be useful for the 21st Century Committee for the library. And we, you know, when we reach out to the community and, and poll them about things, you know, we can, that might very well help us figure out what it is that we're, what are we striving for?
So that'll be, say, January of 2022?
Yeah, probably something like that.
That will be great. Sally, that was a very good, an overview and an update and all of those points. So thank you. That was, that was very, very clear.
Thank you. Thank you. And thank you for coming.
Thanks for the clarity, Sally. And I think just knowing what the plan is and being able to articulate that is really, really helpful.
Any, any other items, Sally?
Ellen, do you have anything else to contribute?
Nope, great job, Sally.
Okay. You helped prepare it. And then David, back to you. Did you want to add anything more?
Actually, we have the council liaison.
Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped that. I, I am so sorry. Mayor Mahmoud, sorry.
I, I was going to be here. The order didn't matter. I do have some things. One is Bianca did a very nice job of presenting your review of last year and your work plan. So she did you proud. I would note that in light of the indication today that the county is likely to reach the red tier, they say somewhere between, and it depends upon whether or not they meet the, is it two million mark in statewide in administration of vaccines to disadvantaged areas? They're anticipating, the county is anticipating that that will occur Monday, sometime Monday through Wednesday. But I did want to note, that caused me to go back to the county's public health website and to the orders issued by the public health director. And as, as of February 18th, libraries are able to open at 25% capacity. So that is something that we could do now if we wish to. And I do understand, and the county public health department does host weekly call-in sessions. There are weekly briefings for electeds and staff. And I've been routinely dialing in. And I'm going to have several questions to ask Kathy, but I will try to make that, one of my questions, that is to get confirmation from county as to whether or not they concur with what you were told by. I understand it's someone from the office of the state librarian, is that correct?
The state librarian. It's, it's on the state's website. It's on the state's health, whatever their department is called. The state health department has added the bullet under 1B is library workers who work with students.
You should be, you should be good to go then. You had mentioned spring break. And as I recall, South Pass School District always takes the same week, which is the first week of April. So I, I don't know that your staff could get, could receive vaccinations in time. But since today is the 11th, it strikes me that that might be doable. It would be such a gift to the community to at least open for 25%. And yes, absolutely, fire department should have a number as to maximum occupancy. That's a regulatory requirement. So if we don't have it, we had to have had it at one time. And I'm glad that someone will be working with you to establish that because absolutely, we should have that. I also was thinking, and I, I was wondering if at some point in the next coming months, the board would wish to consider. At this point, we have been operating under a very significantly reduced schedule in that we're closed Sunday, which I think is a really big deal. And quite frankly, I didn't realize until I looked at our schedule that we had been closed on Sunday. And once we're out of the pandemic, which hopefully maybe midsummer might be a, a time to look forward to. But certainly no later than the fall, absent something unforeseen. I'm wondering whether or not the board would be interested in exploring whether the library wishes to maintain a, a delayed opening during the weekday to 1:00 PM. I know it's been challenging. This has been a recurring issue for the board previously that we were not, we were not able to, it was difficult for us to retain part-time employees. And there were times when the library, the librarian had to staff to check out the circulation desk because we ran out of part-time employees. So to the extent that that might help to address that and, and the reason that we can't keep our part-time employees is that apparently other libraries are able to fund FTEs and we are limited in the number of hours under the Affordable Care Act. We're limited in the number of hours that we can employ people without having them considered an FTE and eligible for benefits under, under Affordable Care. So this is just something, it just dawned on me. It might be something that the library may wish to consider. Although definitely I think we should reopen on Sunday. That's really important, I think, to families in town. And then Kathy, if you think that the app will be live by next Wednesday, I would be happy to mention that during council member comments, particularly if you give me, if you just shoot me an email to tell people what to search for in the Apple Store or Google Play.
Okay, I'll send you that.
Great. Okay, that, yeah, that's it.
Sorry that I missed, overlooked you there, Diana.
No worries.
Okay, now back to David. David, as trustee liaison to the Friends, did you have any other comments?
No, I think pretty much was covered there. There's the ongoing discussions surrounding the bookstore and the, you know, the issues with that. So, so in terms of, you know, if any change in hours is being considered, I would like to say, let's take a look as well at what impact that may have on bookstore sales.
Definitely, okay.
And I, I just don't know how busy you were during those earlier hours. You know, if, if you were fairly busy, if Kathy, if you felt that it would, it would result in, in a significant decrease in service, then don't think about it. But I thought, okay, well, now people for some time have been used to the library not being open until 1:00. So I was thinking, maybe that would enable us to find some additional money to do things with technology. Just a thought.
It's true that I've got used to example that the South Pasadena Library, I can't pick my book up if I needed, ordered a book from under till 1:00, but I know I can go and pick up books at other libraries that I've ordered from earlier in the day.
Yeah, I think that the public would. We've been talking about hours and perhaps proposing some changes for when we reopen. But I think the public needs some morning hours. That's when we have storytimes. That's the little, you know, you, you have storytime in the morning before morning nap, you know? So we, I, I, I don't think, I don't think we can limit morning hours to that extent. So we, I think it's something to discuss. So we'll, we'll have to have that discussion. The biggest challenge, to be honest, is being open Sundays and staffing that. That's the biggest challenge. So. We're one of the few libraries that's open on Sunday.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, and then any last comments back to you, Kathy?
I just wanted to let you know quickly that the American Rescue Plan package that's been signed into law will have $10 million for California libraries through the library. So we'll see what that's going to look like. You know, it'll probably take a while for them to figure out the best way to trickle it down. And, but I expect it will be a lot of technology-related things. There already is some funding floating around that hasn't quite been decided yet that, that probably will be for Wi-Fi hotspots or maybe other types of technical, you know, technology lending devices. And then just quickly, since Annie brought it up, I will give you a fuller report of the equity inclusion and diversity training. But we have been through all three of the live speaker sessions and it's been really, really fascinating and it's been eye-opening and it's given us a lot to think about. We're, we're thinking still about how to engage the part-time staff who weren't able to be part of that actual, the actual live sessions. And I think, you know, our, our goal is to end up with a, 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 a plan and, you know, EID and Equity Inclusion and Diversity Plan that we keep at the forefront of our minds all the times, all the time in all the decisions we make. And so that's going to be an ongoing process. I, you know, we're going to have to work on it together. I think the way that the course was designed was, you know, individuals was sort of worked through that process on their own. But we, we need to do it as a group and we couldn't do it that quickly. So basically, we're going to take everything we learned and kind of capture it and go through it again together at, at a different pace. But it, it was really, really wonderful and, and gave us a lot to think about. But I'll give you a better report next month.
I'm really glad to hear that, Kathy. So it, would you be doing it as a department or a city?
As a department. I mean, I think it's interesting because I know that, you know, the city is, is funding some of this type of training for the police department, but also for other departments perhaps. But I feel like we actually, having gone through this, maybe we have some things we can offer to the rest of the city. Some of, some of these libraries are, are really taking the lead in their city and doing training for other departments. And not that I'm suggesting that we do that, but you know, we could certainly have resources and materials that we could make available to city staff across the city and, and support their efforts to improve in these areas. So yeah, it's just a departmental initiative that we undertook. We've been thinking about it since last spring and this opportunity was a good one. So we, we, we took it. But yeah, we have to work through, you know, there was a lot of homework that none of us got done, basically, on our own. So we need to do the homework together, I think.
Okay. All right. And any other last thoughts, comments? All right, well, this was a very full agenda and a lot of good discussion. It looks like we've got our work cut out for us as we go forward. And so I think then we'll call this meeting adjourned at 8:53 and have a nice weekend, everybody. Stay warm, stay warm, everybody, yes.
Thank you.
Bye-bye. Good night.